All right, so we're going to skip to the study items. And we're going to talk about the much anticipated Alicia Sanchez Elementary Priority Improvement Plan.
Evening, President Marquez, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. So I'm here this evening accompanied by Principal Joel Rivera to share with you the work that he has engaged in in collaboration with the staff and community of Alicia Sanchez Elementary School. When we were before you in October, we shared their work to date in the area of school improvement. We're back in front of you this evening in compliance with the Colorado Department of Education's required processes for schools who have been previously given a categorical rating of turnaround. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to share the communication and collaboration activities that have occurred with the School Accountability Committee, as you heard reference to by Ralph Frid earlier in this evening, and all of the families at Alicia Sanchez, as well as share the school improvement strategies that are in the draft UIP Unified Improvement Plan that was included in Board Docs this evening. Pending feedback from the board, the UIP will come back to you at the meeting on January 12th for your approval prior to being submitted to CDE on January 15th. And so now I am going to turn it over to Principal Rivera for him to share information with you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right, so thanks for having us here. Thanks for hour six, that's a long time. So I hope to be engaging here so you can kind of see what we're doing at the school and we can talk further about that. Before getting into the priority improvement, I just feel compelled to throw out, first off, thanks to Dr. Anderson for all the support he has for Sanchez and all that you've done for us. We think you're doing a fantastic job, so I just want to show my appreciation to you. Also, just thank all the district support, for anybody that watches this that's still on there. Rob in Nativity, thank you so much for everything that you've done for us. Bridget Mutter, Steve Parker, Shannon Gamble, Bertha Arona, Maurice Henriquez, and Nicole Villa. Just all that district support that's going into this. So it's me presenting the plan that, you know, we worked collaboratively to come up with, but we couldn't do it without you all. So I just want to show my appreciation and thank you for that because you've shown so much support for Sanchez and I just feel compelled to say that, so thank you. So are we going to go into the presentation? There we are. And Randy, you can go to the next screen. Okay, so just the turnaround process requirement. Now, the goal of this right here was to, we wanted to get authentic parent engagement with, or not just parent, but families and community on the school improvement process. So you look at some of the turnaround requirements right here, and there's some things that aren't shown on this. Like Ralph said earlier, we were doing this work with parents back in June, starting with our SAC in June. I believe we met three times, just going through more learning around the turnaround process, looking at data, trying to hone in on what are some high leverage actions that we can take, especially as it pertains to family engagement. And then also for that, you know, we started collaborating with staff on this back in January. We were already thinking about this fall's 90-day plan through our UVA work. And so just getting feedback and a lot of folks coming together to develop this plan. In August of 2020, we hooked up with our SAC, with our group again, and looked at some just data that we saw from the TLCC survey, especially focused around community and family engagement and effective engagements, and just started our conversations that way. We developed our turnaround strategy in September, and then that's when the, you know, UVA came in and did their audit with us for the fall 90-day plan. Moving into next semester, and this is all, you know, the 90-day plan's coming into one on the UIP. We notified our community of this public hearing tonight. We had some great parents and some great families sign up, and so I hope those put some smile on their faces because honestly, it was for me sitting here listening to the parents talk. They basically said how, you know, how I hope they were feeling, and so that was awesome to get them on here. So we did this communication, started back in October. I communicated basically every Friday from probably the beginning of October up until today and send letters out and try to get people more involved in this. And then tonight with the public hearing and the board study on the UIP, I hope to have that approved and move forward into January. So that's kind of like the work that we did leading up to, leading up to tonight, really. You can go to the next slide. And so this just kind of spells it out a little bit, a little bit more with the dates and exactly what we did. So connecting with SAC, with our SAC, connecting with our families. We did a survey, if you remember from last year, we did a survey with our parents back in, I believe, February of 2020. And the next step of our 90-day plan was to go into the, going to parent focus groups. Our first focus group was March 13th. You can probably all remember that day pretty well in your head. And so we had to shut that down, but we just finished two focus groups in the last week, and we have two more that are coming up before we go to our mid-year retreat with UVA in January. And so the focus groups were awesome. We had those, we had one yesterday, Becky McKay, who interpreted earlier. She facilitated a Spanish family focus group. So got great information on that to kind of guide our next semester 90-day plan. We met with SAC, and you can see the dates right there. The big thing we did with SAC is we reviewed the TLCC survey, and the lowest scoring thing outside of time that teachers commented on, the next lowest scoring item we had was our parent and community engagement. And so we really just wanted to talk like, why do we have this perception of community engagement that's not effective? So we talked about that quite a bit with our SAC and developed some plans and our actions this semester, which is where the focus groups came out of. And then the information that we get from our focus groups right now will go into effect in our next 90-day plan. So you see right there, and some additional efforts to gather parent input for our UIP. And Randy, you can move to the next slide. Before going into this, I just want to talk about the similarities and differences of the 90-day plan and the UIP. So in a UIP, it's very robust. I'm looking at a printout of it right now. We have about 27 pages. There's a lot of things on there from narrative, prior history. There's projections of goals that you have over, you know, this year and next year. So there's a lot of things that go into it, but like the heart of the UIP, like the actual work that we sit down and we look at as a staff and collaborate on as a staff and as a community, is found in our 90-day plan. And so in our 90-day plan, you know, we have our purpose statement that's in there. We have our goals that we want to attain specifically to get out of turnaround status or priority improvement, which we're in right now. And then it breaks it down to three main goals, and I have those up right there. And so we looked at those three goals, those three priorities, three rocks, as we've called it, and they boil down to those three strategies you're looking at. So the first strategy is all about lesson design and delivery. So if you remember last year, we looked at developing a lesson design that is very specific on what the kids are learning, so content language objectives, very intentional in how we differentiate for our students, very intentional in how we wanted to choose to engage our students, whether online or in person. At the end of that is like, how do we know that our students met those goals? Last year, we focused on, and this came out in our S3M work as well, working with district staff, but we focused on content language objectives, and then how do we know when they got there? How do we know when they made that objective? This year, we put a lot of focus in work and engagement. So at the beginning of the year in our 90-day plan, one of our action items was, how do we work to engage students? We focused a lot, obviously, on virtual learning or home learning. So we had a few experts come in and give some PD to our staff. We also, you know, Becky McKay worked with somebody in an international school. She got them to come in and talk about engagement as well. Moving into next semester, we are going to do work with Kagan, so our whole staff has Kagan training. And again, an effort to put more tools in teachers' toolbox for engagement. And so you'll see that in our UIP and our 90-day plan as well. Strategy two, our second rock, so data-informed collaboration with a commitment to relational trust. That's been kind of our bread and butter this year. As I said before, when we went to our mid-year retreat in January, it was a pretty profound experience for me and the people that went with me, or the staff that went with me. And it really allowed us to like, okay, we talk about looking at data, we want to be data-informed, we want to be very specific on what a kid is learning and where they're at, and how do we improve upon their performance, whether it's providing extensions because they've mastered the content and we want to take them deeper, that they're on grade level, but we want to strengthen their content knowledge, or they're behind grade level and we want to provide intervention. So moving into this year, we are heavily focused on data-driven instruction. DDI is kind of another acronym for you all to learn. But it's been going amazing, and it really built off where last year we built the foundational structures to have these data meetings and just have the mindset of, you know, we are going to reflect on our instruction by looking at student performance and outcomes, and then reviewing some high leverage items that we can look at, or standards that we can look at, and improve it from there. And so this has been great. We meet every Monday with each grade level. We go over student performance based off of benchmark assessments that we've created. We find a standard that we're going to focus in on at a universal level, and that's tier-one instruction. And then we go through reteaching plans and reassessing, and then we review that as we go throughout the year. This has been amazing, and this is where a lot of the work is coming with the district. One of the biggest helps for us this year is having the district purchase illuminate and to use that as our assessment tool. And if you heard a parent talk earlier, you know, just about how we're going to look at data this year, what illuminate has done for us, for one, it's increased the rigor of our assessments, which therefore, you know, just naturally by that increases the rigor of how we instruct and what we're looking for students. And so we're just able to quickly gather information on where students at in terms of the grade level standard and then provide instruction based off of that work. As we move into next semester and next year, what we want to do with illuminate is, you know, before we're looking at CMAS and we're saying, okay, our kids are performing here, and we wanted to shorten that cycle down based off of the DDI work. And so this year, we're looking at benchmark assessments, and we meet for math, reading, math, reading, writing, and we also look at behaviors as well, behavior data. And we look at that benchmark. It's like six to eight-week cycle assessments. And so what we're moving that to next semester, actually, and then next school year full-on, is how do we shorten that even more so that teachers can look at the assessments that they've created? We have a tool that we can look at pretty, that gathers the information, puts it in one spot, and we're able to break it down even into smaller chunks to help provide intervention. We're really excited about that. We actually had Steve Parker do, facilitate our staff meeting last week of showing teachers how to use that tool. And then we're going to provide teachers time this week to start just getting their hands, their feet wet, so to speak, in there and start creating their own assessments, and then next year, use that to just be more, just do this cycle more often, more frequently, and not six to eight weeks. Whereas before, we were doing it just looking at CMAS and making plans based off of that. So that's really kind of transformed the way our conversations go. You know, before, it's kind of, it wasn't as focused or intentional on a specific skill or standard, I should say, that kids are learning. It was more like where are gaps, where are holes, and we kind of focused a lot on intervention. And this really allows us to look at first instruction and make improvements based off of that. The last rock strategy, three, school-wide systems are clear, consistent, and support students, teachers, and families in creating a positive learning environment. This was a big one for us last year. One of my favorite just successes from last year that we were able to kind of review and look at and was looking at Swiss at our behavior data. And I don't know if I said this last time, but our behavior from, you know, the times that kids were, you know, given like an office referral, a referral that was sent down to us, you know, from October to March, our behavior referral data dropped by 85%. And still, when I say that, it doesn't sound real, but from October to February and March, our referrals per day dropped by 85%. Think about that. That's 85%, that's more kids in class, more kids getting first instruction, more kids accessing content than ever before, and we were really on to something before we went into home learning. And so we, when the kids came back this year in the time that we were in, I mean, we were below the, you know, when we look at Swiss, it's a national program that schools use. Last year, if you look at the figures, we were well above the averages of the schools that use. We're talking about thousands of students in many different schools. This year, we're actually below the median in terms of where all the schools' behavior data is, tracking behavior data throughout the, and we look at like per-day data. So it, you know, the pandemic has nothing to do with it. It's like how many times the kids were shown to have, you know, behavior challenges during the day. You know, now we are below the median, which is fantastic. And actually, in the last month, we were just slightly above the 25th percentile. And so again, that's kids in school getting, accessing first instruction with our teachers and sitting there and learning. And so there's a lot to credit to that. We started with responsive classroom last year. All students, all teachers were trained in it. We also had a social-emotional curriculum that all teachers were trained in, and Second Step. We had Second Step Anti-Bullying Curriculum that we got a grant for, that's run by our school psych, Allison Jazinski. And so we have that, and we just revamped our PBIS procedures with our staff, or with our schools. And so like all these things, all these factors led to kind of that success that you saw in our discipline referrals. This year, we were able to kind of step out of the realm of looking at behaviors in a class and setting up a positive learning environment in terms of behaviors. And actually, responsive classroom has a huge academic component that all pertains to engagement. So that was the PD at the beginning of the year for us, is the engagement that we have through responsive classroom. So looking at academic choice, looking at engaging academics and activities that just provide situations for students that they're going to be successful in the classroom. So now we're talking about instruction more and talking about behaviors less and less, which is just an awesome conversation to have, especially for those of you who are familiar with the work at Sanchez, what we're doing now. It's incredible, and we've had a lot of buy-in from our staff. I do have to plug our staff as well. You know, when they look at this 90-day plan and they look at our major improvement strategies, what they're calling the UIP, but our big rocks in our 90-day plan, they know our big rocks. They know the actions that we're doing to make sure that we hit those priorities. And then they're also involved in the process of how do we set up for the next 90-day plan. We're a part of it. We're going to buy into it, and we're going to go for it with full effort. And it's just been an amazing process to be a part of. And again, it started at the top with the support we have from the superintendent and our network leaders, all the way down to the buy-in from the staff. So it's just an incredible effort that we've had so far. I think that's it for that. This slide right now, the next slide just opens it up for questions for you all.
Thank you, Joel, so much for sharing that detailed information about the community engagement, but also the really hard work that you and the staff have engaged in. I applaud all of you because you have put in some very tremendous instructional infrastructure systems and supports in addition to behavioral and social-emotional supports. And we are very, very excited about this work, and thank you for all you've done. And yes, we are very happy to answer any questions that you all may have for us.
All right, thanks so much. Anyone have a question? Why don't you just raise your hand? I can see you all. Kitty?
Yes. First of all, congratulations on all of the work that you've been doing and the engagement you've got. This all sounds so positive, and I'm excited about it. One question you answered for me, which I had had at the bottom of page seven, was that illuminate is the name of a program, just the way the sentence was structured. I wasn't completely sure what that meant. And then the other question I have is at the top of page eight, and it was the I-Ready scores from winter 2020. And for kindergarten and first grade, how reliable is that? Because I know Rob was talking about kids on I-Ready scoring, you know, way off the charts because their parents were helping them.
Well, it is pretty reliable for us. I think the main difference is, is when you look at third, fourth, and fifth grade, when kids take an assessment like CMAS, it's very standards-based. So it's grade-level-based, standards-based, where I-Ready is more of like a flexible type of assessment that's skills-based. So it looks at the kid's skill level versus the standard level that the third, fourth, or fifth grade measures are from CMAS. So when you see like improvement for our kindergarten, first, and second graders, looking at the skills, I would say it's a pretty accurate assessment for that. As far as how that transfers to CMAS, I think we do get this like inflated sense of how students are going to perform looking at I-Ready versus looking at something like illuminate in the benchmark assessments that we create. I mean, that was one of the major changes for us after going to New Mexico. You know, the work that we looked at and the author of the work that presented to us, you know, he does talk about, you know, if we're using standards to see if kids meet grade-level expectations, you got to figure out how to assess those standards. And so it starts with the assessment, and for us, that assessment that we were providing, we were looking at for our data, you know, it wasn't matching the rigor that the students are going to be expected to do, especially as it pertains to us getting out of turnaround status. So looking at our SPF, those tests are really hard. They're, you know, cognitively, they're very difficult. They're very in-depth type questions. You know, language-wise, you know, there's a heavy language component of that. So, you know, when you're a school that has a high ELL population like we do, you know, we have to take that into account as well. And so like those benchmark assessments on illuminate are pretty incredible. And I do, I invite anybody to join any of those meetings if you ever want to see what they're doing. We have people coming observing all the time. So yeah, part of that process is like looking at some high leverage, you know, standards that kids are scoring, not where we're expecting them to score, and then really focusing in on that on our reteach plans. Whereas looking at I-Ready, you're looking at more skills-based. It allows us to do individual small groups to provide more intensive intervention based at those kids' level. But really, when you get to third, fourth, and fifth grade, it's more standards-based. So I think that's a big difference.
Okay, yeah, because that was really exciting to see those numbers in kindergarten and first grade.
And those are, and it's great information for us as well. Like they do, they're starting there, and then once they get into that more content-driven, you know, as a grade level, as you get up in the grade levels, especially when they hit third grade, you know, it's less the skills-based and more the content-based. So we do, that's a focus when we go to, you know, in our benchmark assessments.
Thank you.
Okay, Richard, your hand is up, and then Stacy?
Joel, thank you very much for that report and that update. I did go to the UIP and I've got a couple of questions in relation to the UIP itself. When you look at the additional trend information, can you give me a sense of some of the questions that were being asked on that TLCC survey? Just that I can understand it better?
Yeah, absolutely. So the TLCC survey, I believe, is Teaching and Learning Conditions in Colorado, I think, is what it stands for. Schools do it every two years. There's one caveat I probably should throw out there. It's a teacher perception survey. And so when we did our focus groups, you know, one of the things that the parents in these focus groups talked about is, you know, the teacher perception of how we operate and the parent feelings or perception about how the school works to engage them were a little off. So there's some work that we need to do in, you know, providing more communications to our, especially to our staff, just about what's happening and who's a part of that. But they asked the staff, it's a series of questions. I think there's probably 10 categories, and there's maybe like, you know, four to eight questions per category. So there's a, it's a big thing. It goes from school leadership to teacher leadership to classroom conditions, health and safety. But one of those is community engagement. And so the one we focused on real heavily is, we scored 31% favorability on the school's effort to engage families. And 31% favorability, I think the district average was 84% favorability. And so we talked about that quite a bit in SAC. We talked about that in our parent focus groups. And we developed strategies on both of those, you know, working with, you know, our SEL team, our wellness team, social-emotional learning team, we call it SEL team. So we developed strategies kind of like, okay, how can we, you know, better discuss like how we are engaging families and what that looks like? How can we bring teachers involved and get them involved in that? So we have a communications team now that's comprised of teachers. We have a family support team, which, you know, out of necessity back in March, became very important. So we just continued both of those, both of those groups moving into this year. But we did look at that. The question basically asked, schools' efforts to engage families are effective. And then it's strongly agree, disagree, and so we were 31% favorability, where the district score was 84%. So clearly, something is off there. So we did talk about that, and that was, we put that action or the goal of going from 31% to at least matching the district score of 84% as a goal that we wanted TLCC survey. And so that's where you saw the survey come out. That's where you saw the parent focus groups come out. And then next year, we've already got some great ideas from the focus groups that we're going to implement next semester. And then we're just going to do that process again at the end of this year. It's just like we did with SAC in June to help develop our Fall '21 action plans, especially as it pertains to family engagement.
Thanks a lot, Joel. Would it be possible for maybe you share some of the focus group input?
Yeah, absolutely.
You don't have to do that now.
Oh, okay. I was like, I'm ready, man.
I know, but it's already said 36. I'd like for you to maybe share with me and the board some of that focus group input later on, okay?
Okay. I mean, and there's not a lot of time. I mean, just real briefly.
Okay, go ahead.
Issue we got was, one, they wanted more opportunity for connections between kids, especially, it was all kind of like home learning-driven at this time, at the top of everybody's mind, obviously. So more opportunities for connection between kids, and then more opportunities for how can we support our kids' emotional state at home, which you kind of heard today in some of the parent comments. So we were able to talk a lot about Second Step, our SEL curriculum, because they talk about just really basic skills for kids, like, you know, how to calm down, how to have empathy for one another, and then how to have steps for problem solving. Just really great information. And there's a lot of, there's a huge parent component of that. And so we talked about with our families, and we just kind of made a short little plan about how to just communicate those efforts out to families. So we're going to put that, that's just like low-hanging fruit that we can address right away. And then that was also echoed in our Spanish-speaking group as well, that group as well. And the addition that they had was just more support on some school things that we do, you know, using technology, obviously. Support for reading at home and just, you know, bringing them along with us in terms of how they can support their students at home. So it's really good information that we're going to put into place. So those are the three outcomes that came out so far. We have two more focus groups coming up before January 20th.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate that. The other thing that I had in terms of the question is, you mentioned that one-third of the population or the school enrollment is emergent bilinguals. And one of the main goals that you have is for these emergent bilinguals to learn English. And my question is, as they're learning English, what are you doing for them in the content area as it relates to language arts, math, et cetera?
All right, no, absolutely. And so, you know, one of the things from our 90-day plan last year was we do have interventionist support at every grade level. And this comes into, you know, probably into like the district strategic plan of like resources that schools need based off of the, based off of the need, resources based off of the need. And so we do have a language interventionist at every grade level that works with the grade-level teachers. We have co-teaching in every grade level. This year, we're co-teaching in writing, which, you know, if you think about the language skills that could be built and developed through the writing process, it's just a great opportunity to have that knowledge and that support with each grade level. So we do have, we do have that co-teaching in every grade level. And then when you look at the DDI work, I mean, really, you're identifying where kids are at, and then you are making your instructional plans based off of their performances, which include language, obviously includes, you know, language acquisition. That's a big one. And what we also included in our DDI work is, you know, as we're making these reteach plans, you know, what is our, looking at our culturally appropriate teaching? So there is actually a question after we kind of go through, you know, the standard we're going to focus on, how can we look at this instruction in a culturally appropriate way? You know, and some surface-level things like, you know, that come off the top of, you know, our heads are usually like, you know, vocabulary, accessing background knowledge, making content relevant for students, and what is that? Getting to know your students so that you can develop some really engaging lessons that can connect to them. You know, the whole like, why do I have to learn this? And so putting that into our, into our instruction when we're building our, designing our lesson. And it's all part of our lesson design, our Rock One, like the engagement strategies and differentiation strategies that we have kids. And then they have experts in there in the DDI meetings with our language acquisition teachers. So there's a lot going on with language acquisition. If you look at kind of our results, you talked about the trend analysis. You know, I believe we went up 16.5% in growth from last, two years ago to last year. And so we're already seeing some positive outcomes from that. We need to continue that trend probably for another two or three years to have them, you know, reach grade level before they leave our school. But there's already early results that are showing, even in the middle of, you know, like a switch to home learning in March and the pandemic. So, you know, we have our work cut out for us there, but we do see the results happening already.
And some of those interventions, does that include also some kind of native language support?
You know, we have, one of the things we did this year, we were able to do is we have a Spanish speaker at every grade level, which has been awesome. You know, we have, one of the things we did this year, we were able to do is we have a Spanish speaker at every grade level, which has been awesome. We have a great family support team, all bilinguals. So we're able to connect with families and able to provide materials, resources and support needed there. Becky McKay is just fantastic as our assistant principal, being able to, you know, provide that support as well. And so we do have that at every grade level.
Thanks, Joel. Good job.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay. Donna, any questions? Oh, Stacy, I'm sorry.
I don't have any questions, just a few comments. One, I want, I thank you for hanging in there through this meeting to give your presentation. And, you know, how excited you are about what's happening at your school is really infectious. So I'm kind of sad that more people didn't stick around to hear what you had to say. And I just want to give you my congratulations for your hard work and your progress. And I wanted to share that when the parents were speaking, I was smiling, just like you did. And one thing particularly stuck with me was one of the parents that said how proud she was to have open enrolled at your school.
Yes.
And that, I just think that's awesome. So keep up the good work.
Thank you, Stacy, so much. I appreciate that.
Any other comments?
No, just, whoops, just, I do admire your enthusiasm. I'm sure the whole staff is as enthusiastic as you are. It, it's, like Stacy said, it's very impacting, infectious to all of us. Thanks.
Oh, I hope so. Thank you, Donna. Yeah. And I just to add on to that, I, I can't praise our staff enough. You know, it is just hard and I've had conversations with them. It's like, you know, the expectation of, of being in turnaround while, while going through a pandemic and moving in and out of home learning to in-person learning, that's, it's, that, that's got to be tough. I, I shown that, that empathizing with them because they really are working hard and they want it. Like they, 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 they want this. A lot of staff have been there for a while. And I just like, I, I hope that they, they feel the same way I do and that we're doing the right work. But it's, it's, it's the best experience I've ever had and I've said that these last two school years. This has just been an incredible opportunity for me and the work has been awesome together. So thank you for that, Donna.
Okay. Kathy, had your hand up again?
Again, I haven't said anything yet on this. I'll be quick, I promise. The thing that impressed me almost the most, Joel, was your behavior data that you gave us.
Yeah.
That, that says a lot to me about your climate and culture. And I'm always trying to look for ways to see what's going on in the school besides C mass and other scores. So that was, thank you for sharing that. That, that was pretty awesome. And then I just have a really quick question for you. So, you know, the U I P talks about root cause analysis and it seems like there's three basic root causes that you go to. I'm just wondering which is the one that you thought was the most challenging and that you're still really struggling with? And as ways we could be supportive?
Well, I, I would say the one that I saw like the greatest, and looking at it as like probably the biggest opportunity we had was the data piece. And so like last year when we start, this was like a priority last year. And, and looking back on it, it was like we were setting up such a huge like foundational structure piece and a mindset. Like we are going to look at student performances to reflect on our instruction and fix and, and, and improve our first instruction at a universal level. Because two, a lot of times it's really easy to go to like, I, I taught these kids and get it. Now I'm going to go straight to intervention. But for our teachers this year to say like, I taught it, our kids perform here and this is what we're going to reteach, doing it this way. That was just like an incredible mind shift, you know what I mean? So we're looking at like, what can we control in terms of like our educator teacher behaviors? And going and using, having a tool, because last year we were creating assessments. We were looking at different assessments. We were creating spreadsheets, like felt like every week our teachers were making new spreadsheets to look at data. And now illuminate with the work that, you know, we did with the district. We have an interventionist, Jess Rothman, who she was, she went with us to our DDI, to our midyear retreat last year. Leading some of these, leading the facilitation effort of DDI, having her in place there and she's done a fantastic job with what she's doing. That, that has been like the biggest like opportunity for us and I think it's going to probably pay the biggest dividends. I mean, if you ever have a chance to look at some of these, you know, it's called uncommon schools, you know, with the DDI work and look at their outcomes, like I'm, we're expecting that. Like we are doing the things that we learned are the best practices and we want those outcomes. And so that, that has been like the biggest challenge, but also the biggest opportunity. And I think it's the one we really like took the bull by the horns on that one and, and we're running with it right now and it's going really well.
Can I just say how awesome it is that I asked you if it's a challenge and you answered it with what's an opportunity?
Thank you. No problem.
Other, Rob?
I just want to thank Joel, thank Robin for all of their incredible work. Thanks for hanging in there with us at the, maybe the record breaking latest board meeting that we've had. And I wish this could have gone first. I think that the board members, I'm so incredibly proud of Joel's leadership, of the things that his team is taking on. They are doing the right work. And as you hear Joel speak, what you're hearing is, is a very strong instructional leader who knows and understands how to improve outcomes for all kids. As we think about the, our partnership with University of Virginia School Turnaround, high quality professional development, high quality executive leadership development. And, and we, we continue to look forward to the days that other schools can be learning from the, from the strong practices at Sanchez. And so change takes time. I think that we're in year two of the partnership. And, but, but it doesn't happen without a strong leader. So thank you, Joel. And, and thank you so much to Robin Fernandez, who has Sanchez every, every week. And I think that the board, it's important for the board to know and understand as we've, as we've talked about treating schools differently and supporting them differently, that Columbine, Sanchez, Cole Elementary are getting intensive supports from our district, the, the levels of resources that they need. And I, I think what you're going to see is that's going to make just a significant difference in the outcomes that we're getting for those students. So just really proud, so thankful for everything that's happening at Sanchez and just excited for the future.
Okay, Lisa and then Kitty?
I just want to say it's, it's clear how intentional and thoughtful this process is and how passionate you are about the work. So just thank you so much for all you're bringing.
Thank you.
Kitty?
So again, thank you. And it's so nice to end the meeting on a positive note. But one of the things you said struck a chord with me when people said, why do we have to learn this? And it reminds me of, I was teaching an eighth grade social studies class and this kid said, why do we have to learn this? And I said, so you get jokes. So I told them that science has now quantified beauty and the unit of beauty is a milli Helen, the amount of beauty required to launch one ship.
I'll have to, I'll have to remember that because my, my daughter just asked me, why do I have to learn this the other day? And she's in sixth grade and I, and it was a math question and I'm, I was a math teacher. I was like, what? So I'll have to put that in my back pocket.
So you get jokes.
All right. Any other comments or questions for the Sanchez team? No?